All right, it looks like six o'clock top of the hour. Let's call this meeting to order.
Uh, politically just as applied the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call of the role, Mr. Foraker.
Present.
Ms. Edler.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Fordice.
Present.
In person, unless, welcome back. Start putting up a hologram of you or something. Uh, number four, approval of the agenda.
We're striking the one conversation.
Yeah, we can, we could omit the street closure policy. This is just a session.
Which number is that again? Is that be twenty C?
Twenty C.
Okay, so motion to approve the agenda with tabling item twenty C. Second. Foraker.
Hi.
Now, I see me, Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Okay, approved minus twenty C. Uh, on to number five, uh, citizen, citizen hearing and other communications. Start off with Polk County Sheriff, Lieutenant. Marty.
July, we had thirty nine calls for service. Radar setups, building checks, traffic stuff, had a couple disputes, a couple suspicious calls, people. Arms, things like that.
Um, I was on the email chain back and forth, uh, as far as the things we'd requested, as far as some additional in-town patrols, the, the speed trailer where we can get it, things like that. So I'll say thank you in advance.
Yeah, he just got back from his vacation, so we'll start getting that back up here.
Okay, and I'm sure, I'm sure there's several other folks on the list as well, but whenever you can, we'd appreciate it, just so we can kind of start monitoring that more in town, so.
And in case it gets lost in the interpretation, we're, we're asking a lot of questions, so we can get our footing and get our understanding what the city needs, but it in no way means that you guys aren't doing a great job, or that we have any questions about the level of service. Thank you for all you guys continue to do to support the city. We really do appreciate it.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, definitely, we appreciate that, so.
Council, anything else?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, letter B, Scott Drake cannot be here in person this evening. Katie, do you have his notes, or did you want to go over them, or would it be me too?
I didn't print them out, I just forwarded them to you all, but something like them is very active.
Yeah, um, I can pull them up if you guys want to hear what Scott had to say, just kind of a summary of going down the last bump here. Uh, let's see here.
Uh, bear with me, I'm just gonna quote read, this is from Scott Drake, like I said, he's not able to be here this evening, our fire chief, but this is kind of the monthly update that he sent to Katie, uh, earlier today, or over the weekend, rather. Uh, the fire department had our three-year renewal with the Iowa Department of Public Health to get our EMS license recertified. The inspection was conducted onsite with an agent from IDPH. We successfully passed the inspection and have been recertified for another three years. Constant contributions from our EMS members, and especially Captain Mark Voig, uh, for ensuring that the necessary paper was in place. The fire department held a joint EMS training with the North Polk Sports Medicine Team members last week. It's the first time this has been done with the, uh, within North Polk, and the reception from our members, as well as the school staff was very positive. It helped them to understand what equipment we have and how to use it, but it also gave our personnel the opportunity to understand the emergency action plan in place as a school, uh, and what capabilities they possess, so that in the event of an incident, we can work together to mitigate the issue and get all affected parties the help they need as soon as possible. Elkhart EMS personnel will again be staffing the home varsity football games this fall. Six members of the fire department worked the Hall of Flame booth at the Iowa State Fair on Friday, August sixteenth, for three hours. It's been an annual tradition for as long as I've been on the department, and we continue to do our part to represent the Iowa Firefighters Association. Last Saturday morning, we participated again in preparing breakfast for the North Polk High School football teams. Our small part, uh, was to make pancakes for the team. Parents contributed a variety of pastries, casseroles, fruits, and meats. It seems after a Saturday morning practice, the boys really appreciate the food, and golly, can a team of a hundred and twenty eat a lot and fast, with several exclamation marks behind that.
Game on.
Uh, Mr. Drake continues, "Our new skid unit was placed into service two weeks ago and has already been utilized to extinguish a fire. The new unit is three hundred gallon but high-pressure pump capable of three hundred PSI of water flow. It'll be a great asset for grass, brush, field fires, but has the capability to help us with other smaller fires, uh, or fires that are hard to reach with the bigger trucks. It's extremely handy to have a tank that doesn't leak and a pump engine that runs like a top. Thank you to Ron Adams for the use of the forklift and end loader, as well as Kate and Drake for his labor to assist with removing the old unit and installing the new unit into our existing Ford truck. Our SCVA bottles, uh, and packs were also placed into service after they've all certified and flow-tested. This will allow us to graduate, uh, from the twenty-two sixteen PSI units to forty-five hundred PSI units, uh, and carry thirty-minute air supply with us. These tanks have a thirty-year lifespan instead of the fifteen that is typical with the positive bottles. They'll still need to be hydrostatically tested every five years, uh, but they'll be recertified and placed back into service for the next thirty years. I do believe at that time I'll be fifty-five." Scott, not me. Oh, hey, I'm just quoting here. Tuesday, the standby generator for City Hall and Fire Station will be wired in and put in service. Uh, there have been some volunteer work to get to this point, and I'd like to mention Mark Voig, Just, um, Simeons, I, I probably, as I butchered that, I think I did, uh, and Rod Adams for their, uh, for their efforts to help get the pad prepped and poured, as well as getting some of the wiring in place prior to the installation. Uh, I did reach out to see if Scott had any information for total calls of service. We're gonna wait to hear back from that, Katie will forward that on to us later this week, so. That's all from Scott. Thank you for delving me like for that off for a moment, so. Uh, we'll move on to letter C, any public comments for items not on the agenda?
If, uh, you've, not if, when you find out who has a problem out at the trailer, at the new park, tearing it all up, are you going to prosecute? You gonna slap him on the wrist, or you just tell him don't do that?
Don't believe we've had that discussion as of yet. Uh, I would say.
Does it make any difference who it is when you find out?
I wouldn't think that would be.
I'm just running by you, because you're gonna be very surprised.
If you've got any information on that, Mr. Adams, we'd love to know.
Oh, I got all sorts of, if you hear, if you listen a little bit, you'll hear, you'll find out who it is.
Okay.
People are gonna be happy, but you'll find out who it is.
We have had some conversations about possibly, um, about trying to get some cameras, security cameras out there, some internet and security cameras out there, so we can monitor that better. And so when instances like this comes up, then we can take care of those. So, um, we haven't put that in place yet, but that is on our list to take care of.
Second thing is, you talk about changing this up here, how many of you remember that? Have been up there to read the plaque on it in Judea, but there was a person killed, springtime in Judea, and she used to come up here and play tennis, and she liked to, and there's her folks. Put all the money into putting this together to make this tennis court. And now, it's always been basketball, and they had it set up where you flood it in wintertime to ice skate on it. They took that away, put the tennis court in, it's fine and dandy. Basketball and tennis court. Now you wanna monkey it up and put extra lines on it to play pickleball. Fine and dandy, but we got two courts out there, why don't you use one of them to put it on and leave this in the way it is?
So far, the, the majority of the demand for the pickleball has come from people that are on this area, and that's just what they ask.
Forty-sixth Street, I understand that barricade and all of your.
Not that, that's relevant, Mr. Adams.
Yeah.
I think part of it too is because there's, there's an actual tennis net setup down here, whether the other court doesn't have a setup. Right, we're looking at getting a different, um, different net that cranks to lower and adjusted.
Yeah, it's.
Do the same thing there.
It's not, there's no current setup over there, and frankly, it's, I don't think there's any disrespect to anybody who donated any money by making it more modern for folks, so they can continue to use it even more, and they'd get more use out of it if it had multiple purposes, so.
So would your dad over there?
Thank you for your opinion, appreciate it.
Anything else, anybody? Yes?
Yeah, um, I would. Park, park, the new park, okay. You're coming, um, from north to south, past the fishing pond to come out of there, there's the bike path walking trail where oversized sidewalk. Where that fence is on the west side of that, I, the other day, almost tried to look, gave my attention that when people come zipping off that sidewalk that is going west to east, that fence has created a very effective blind zone there. It's a blind corner, and it might not be, be a bad idea to put up some sort of vector crossing signs. You know, I don't know from the, from the parking lot out, for stop signs on the, the sidewalks going across, but that's an avoidable circumstances that can be addressed there.
Yeah.
So, but that, you know, I almost questioned if the fence is too far south. Should it go all the way up to the edge of the walking path? Because it may, it does make a blind corner there.
Sure, that's a discussion that we can have, and maybe at the next parks, uh, parks meeting, we discuss that.
Any other comments not on the agenda this evening?
Uh, my window would be going plan B, so.
Correct.
Don't give you leads of.
No, make sure you communicate with Katie as far as what all's going on through there, since it's going through insurance.
It'll come, they'll, they'll serve it to you.
Okay.
We're six hundred dollars apart on that in Judea from the bid I got to what they'll pay, so then the way I can get it is to take it to court.
Make sure you address any, anything you need with, with Ms. Wilson, and we'll go through there. That was something that you had to go through our insurance company on.
Oh, it is.
I, I'm just saying, it's nothing we had to, it was the right way to do it, and if there's any issues that needs to be between you, her, and the insurance company, so. Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Let the record state, that was Ron Adams and Tony Hess who spoke. Uh, anytime we have public comments, guys, if you wouldn't mind to state your name and either address or where you reside in town, for the folks who may be watching back or listening to the recording, I'd appreciate that, so, thank you.
All right, uh, number six, reports of elected officials, city staff, and standing committees. Well, I'll start with you.
Well, um, Polk County Emergency Management has their quarterly meeting on Wednesday, so, uh, I'm actually already off WordPad today, so I'm hopefully able to attend, and, uh, we'll be able to report back from that. Should be covering a lot of everything that's gone on this, the summer, as far as weather, and then, uh, just general business as well.
Awesome. Were you able to participate in any of the, uh, additional fire events that Scott had mentioned?
I have not, no.
Okay, um, if we, if you guys know of those, or whatever, if you can give us a heads up, because I, I was at the fair all day Friday, I'd love to come by and see the guys and tell them thank you and this and that. We had, we appreciate what they're doing, we just had no idea they were gonna be out and about doing that, and out of, out of Polk as well, so, uh, if you could pass that along, it'd be awesome. Yeah.
Thank you.
Edler?
I was actually out ill for the last meeting for first and recs, but, um, I do believe Katie attended that meeting. Katie, would you mind? Yeah, sure. Yeah, um. So on the agenda is the pet waste receptacles, a sort of a big, um, key item they decided on, doing a full system in black metal, um, for the resistance, and then, sorry, just a moment here. I'm trying to find my notes. Um. So they also talked about the Cambridge Library a lot, and having story time or doing a story block, um, to get the kids more involved. The library director is now full-time over there. So, um, she's wanting to collaborate more with Elkhart, bring more Elkhart to then. Um, they also talked about organizing a back-to-school event each August, um, all against either a water fight or end-of-summer event. Um, they talked about getting the fire department involved, possibly Polk County Sheriff Department, um, all the organizations, um, is that gonna be?
Yeah, this year?
No, no, just for the future. Um, and we just got an update regarding the donations, I think I sent that out. We've had two benches donated so far, um, and then the city is gonna send thank you letters for those. Um, and they will be meeting in September again. Um, September eleventh will be the meeting at City Hall. But the main action item for tonight, pet waste recycle, it's not an action item, but I wanted you guys to just sit to make sure we're on board with putting those in the park, uh, because they will have to be maintained by the city, so.
Thanks both, and you're all soon.
I was on vacation during the cemetery committee meeting, and I do know that notes got passed out on that as well.
Yep, um, so they are, Chip is interested in having the city basically approve, um, establishing more lots on the west end of the cemetery to provide more options, um, for purchase, because, because right now we only have, I think, five, four or five, um, sections that are available for purchase for people looking. Um, so they are interested in that. We got them, Deb got them an update on their financials, and we're clarifying things for them moving forward, so that each month they know where they're at, um, with spending. Um, and then we just kind of talked about making sure that they have the updated internet rights documentation, they know who's, but what, who's purchasing what lots when, um, markings, things like that, so. We did talk about their Facebook page also. They're deciding to keep that private for the time being, so as the city page, we're gonna try and share as much as we can, um, from their posts, so.
Uh, only thing I would ask, I was able to sit in on the parks meeting as well, but I'm like, Katie gives you the things you asked for. Um, if you know you're not gonna be able to attend the cemetery meeting, if you can reach out to us, if one of us can sit in, I was not available, otherwise I was gonna reach out to you. Um, not a big deal this time, but just, I'd like to see some type of coverage from council or somebody there, just as, as a representative of stuff.
That makes sense. I'll let Chip know, but I will let you know.
Awesome, thank you so much. Um, not much from me this time around. We pulled my notes back up here, uh, a couple of things I had jotted down, and we've covered so far. Uh, let's see here, sat on the parks meeting, uh, there was an issue, I believe it was last weekend, uh, wanted to touch on really quick with the fencing here for the water treatment plant project. It was either last weekend or the weekend prior. Uh, just happened to drive by just to check and see the progress and get a firsthand look at what's going on, and noticed that the fence was basically open over here at the corner. Uh, went home, grabbed some zip ties and fixed it and adjusted it, so nobody could get in there. Um, I sent an email off to Ron Cornwell and Katie, being a Friday evening, I did not expect a response, but I got a response almost immediately, immediately from Ron, saying that he would reach out, and he had somebody with, I forget the grading company, who was out here digging the, the trench that was there. Um, they got a gentleman who lives actually here in town, and he was out within five minutes to assist and take a look at it as well and help button things up, so. Um, I know you addressed it with the folks here, and they're gonna keep a closer eye on that, but, um, just something we need to make sure that we're keeping an eye on, just for safety sake and everything. Um, let's see here, um, we've talked about kind of the, Jill, you touched on the camera discussion, we had some comments and things of that, both on, on social media and, and in person. Um, we just asked that if any of the citizens see anything suspicious, or you have any information, or you have anything you'd like to report, just so we can kind of get ahead of it on top of it, please don't hesitate, let us know. We can't fix things that we don't know about, and we can't help with things that we aren't aware of and don't know about, so it's counterproductive to play, uh, chase the mouse or cat and tail or whatever analogy I'm trying to use here, but. You cat and mouse, thank you. I just, if, if we know things, or if you say I see anything, let us know. That's, that's all we're asking, so that way we can be proactive instead of reactive. Um, mentioned to Lieutenant while he was here, uh, some email correspondence back and forth about getting some, while they're here, more patrols through town. Uh, I appreciate the radar setups as well, uh, but just kind of checking out the streets and up and down. Uh, had, as I have requested that we get some speed trailer, uh, presence in town as well, whenever possible. Um, multiple streets that I requested, and specific, I'm not gonna name the which ones at this time, uh, but there have been multiple throughout the city that I've requested the trailer when available be placed at, uh, just because we've received more complaints about speeding through town and on the county roads through the town as well. Um, sat in on a meeting with, uh, some members from the North Polk School Board, uh, Brad or Katie, I'll let you guys, uh, touch more on that one, Brad Fordice, I'll let you guys more, touch more on that one, because we were, you were there as well. Um, it was a good meeting, uh, and I thought it was a great conversation to kind of see what potential future needs may be, and, uh, just let them know that the city is here to help in any way that we possibly can, so. That's what I've got. Campbell?
Uh, two things, one of them's already an agenda item, but I'll discuss kind of the background of it really quick, so I have twelve, because Ron and Rick have been super busy over the summer with the storms, with all the projects, not being able to take time off, therefore they have a bunch of time off that they have occurred that they would like to use, so they're asking for an extension. We'll talk about that at least twelve. That's the background on it, and then, uh, they're also asking about a city truck, whether it's a plowed truck, I think, uh, Ron had mentioned there, there's a budget for like fifty thousand or something like that, because you did a swamp to get a skid loader before.
So, did you get a budget for it this year?
I think so, so we need to, they're asking that we look into that, um, for two reasons. One is if we have a third employee hired for parks or, or for, uh, streets, and also a plowed truck, potential for the additional roads that we've, uh, built over the last year, so.
They were wanting to purchase it, um, soon, or was?
Yeah, they, I think that's what it sounded like.
Okay, yeah, I'll ask him on that.
Yeah. Do we have any update from, uh, Mr. Cornwell about, uh, either getting a, I don't wanna call it a job description, but a, an ad out there, as far as I know, they're looking for some seasonal help through the summer, which is almost over, but mowing will continue, and then with, uh, with winter coming, I'm sorry to say the W word and the S word is snow, but, um, we'd like to get kind of what they're looking for, get a list, so we can promote that, and to get some part-time folks on the roster for them.
I will get that for next meeting.
Anything else, Campbell? That's it.
Yeah, what did I say, away? So as Johnny said, um, Katie, myself, Angie, Angie and Johnny met with two members of the school board and the superintendent about a week and a half ago to discuss a lot of stuff, but just in short, setting up a routine and, and, uh, reoccurring meeting between the city and the school board. Um, we talked about possible changes in representation on the school board, AKA the potential of having expansion down the road. Uh, we talked about more proper use of the North Polk living and the advertisement side of that to draw more attention to projects and things like that, uh, that are happening in Elkhart, uh, to make it feel more included in the school district, um, and to try to bridge the gap between, well, it's us versus them, it's us, it's, it's Elkhart and it's Polk City, and they're two different things, and two different little leagues, and two different everything. To start working on that as we go, uh, in terms of future schools, there is not an immediate need, um, the future, with what they're doing now in expansions, it can house well over a hundred more students, but at some point, within the next, I don't wanna shoot too short, but five to seven years, there will be a need most likely for an elementary school. There's other options on the table. Two things will drive that. One will be a centrality of population of those people, and the second will be available infrastructure or infrastructure that's already in place. And I, I thought we did a pretty good job as a group pointing out the improvements we're making to the water here in town, the lagoon projects in town, including potential expansion in the next year and a half of that to another cell, because our population is growing pretty rapidly. Um, and it was the opinion of one of the school members that infrastructure may be more important to them than centrality of population, so, meaning if, if the infrastructure's in place, if the city's willing, it's just the big thing is gonna be where to put it. They're not fans of putting it on the same side or, or near the railroad tracks. Um, they'd like to distance it by at least a blacktop or so for a lot of different reasons that we don't need to get into at this time, but ongoing conversations will be had. Future meetings will take place, and we'll rotate, hopefully, council members going to those meetings, so that it's a fresh set of opinions each time, and it's not just the same two or three people attending those, uh, and then, and get something set up there. Um. Jill mentioned cameras at the park. That was something I looked into over a year and a half ago, but at the time, we didn't have a power source for internet that was viable. I know that seemed so simple, just took it up to a power pole, it's not. So, the companies that were looking into it said, once you have somewhere to house the units, then you can do directional internet, we can put cameras up. And at the time, um, we had talked about the completion of the lift station. Once the lift station's up and the fence is put around it, that would be a great place to house some type of an internet-bearing cabinet that can shoot directional internet to these cameras. The question was asked, well, why does the camera need internet? Well, you can't monitor it if you don't have internet, and we're not gonna put a recording device in the park and then go retrieve the recordings, and that, they need to be able to be viewed remotely. So that is, that is something that the groundwork has started. The idea is they're just waiting for the lift station to be done, and then parks can discuss where it is in their priority list, and we can, we can look at budgeting for that. Um. Any questions on that? I mean, that's in brass tacks, what eighteen months ago I started, I had people come out and do quotes and stuff.
They will have the ability to record though, even though we can.
It'll definitely always record to a cloud.
Okay, just so we.
That was the other, we didn't have to buy a server that way. There's a whole, it's not just like, well, just put a camera up and magically, and the four G cameras and all that, we looked into that, it wasn't cost, it was not cost-effective to do that. Um, last but not least, so a bulk of the ARPA funds were paid out to the business. Katie and Deb did a great job of tracking down what's been paid out. I know there's been some questions in the past about like mainstream revitalization funds, what businesses use that, so that's, that's set up to where we now know what's left of that. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose some things to you guys in September that we could use what's left of that money for, because city infrastructure is something that it can, uh, be spent on. Um, I'd like to see City Hall potentially brown, potentially white. We've gotten a quote for that. Recently, we had, um, Cruiser come in and do some LED conversion work. Scott's been asking for brighter lights at the fire station. Um, the money should cover that. Katie's, Katie's verifying some things, and then I think the community center could use a fresh coat of paint, maybe some new ceiling tiles, and those LED lights would go a long way in here too. And we have enough money that isn't our money, but it does have to be used by the end of the year, and if we can get it approved to use that federal funding for it, it's just a proposal, I'll throw some ideas out there, and then, and then we can go from there. Um, but it would be nice to get the, um, community display in front of City Hall cleaned up. We need new doors on it, so that we can actually use it, and they don't get wet every time it rains. Things like that are, are priorities that's, I think, often get overlooked, and funds like this would take care of without a lot of, a lot of issues, since it's, I never use the term free money, somebody's paying for it, but it's, it's federal money, so. Um, the rest, uh, gas station update, I actually had a conversation today with the developer, he's on the other side of the world, I was, uh, surprised, I got him on the phone, but it was fun. Um, I wouldn't answer my phone if I was in India, on vacation doing something, but great conversation with him, plans are moving forward, we should have a construction update, uh, the scheduling update from Seneca by the end of this week. Heard that for six straight weeks, but we'll see. Um, and he estimated completion will be early spring, so at some point this fall, we're gonna have to revisit the idea of, of moving the December thirty-first date. I'm personally not interested, uh, as a council member, owning land designated for a gas station, which will be about half complete by then in theory. So I'll have to have that conversation, uh, moving that back into the spring, if, if you guys are compatible to it. But, other than that, he got the lot mode. Katie was gracious enough to give him Erosion Works, uh, information. He had them out there, they took care of that for us this meet, or for him this weekend, which was great. But all signs were positive today, the phone call went great. I'm, I'm very confident it'll move forward, and when we have a construction schedule and, um, some type of a groundbreaking target is late September for the groundbreaking, even though it may be underway by then, so. That is the most recent gas station update. I think that's it, the rest is on the agenda, I'll shut up. Sorry, I'm actually here.
Um, we, I guess today, we got the exciting news that we were selected for the American Public Works Association Award for Prairie Point Park. Um, so Elkhart will get recognized at the conference this September, um, so that's pretty exciting. Uh. Just a couple other things, uh, we got our check scanner set up in City Hall, that's awesome. Um, it's gonna be a time saver, more efficient, um, so we're excited about that. Um, Deb has done an amazing job at getting our finances cut back up, so you have, uh, July twenty twenty-four in your packets tonight, um, on the consent agenda, um, so you'll receive those each month. Um, and we are going to get you last fiscal years out, um, shortly, it'll be this week probably. Um, but she's been working very hard on getting those all, um, in a good spot, and so you can see where you ended the year, this year, um. Also, I put on there, um, you know, Ron mentioned it earlier, the pickleball court painting, I just wanted to make sure you guys are okay, uh, with us getting a stencil to get that done. Ron and the parks board and volunteers are willing to get that done this summer, um, so I just wanted to let you know, that's what we plan to do, um. uh, codification, we'll start that next September meeting. Uh, just received all that paperwork in the mail. So, um, that will be exciting to hold that hearing. If we have to allow 30 days, um, and then hold a hearing and then we can adopt it. And then we'll have one draft of what our code is. Um, the maintenance bond, the paving repairs, um, I sent out a little note. Our current city attorney cannot be in a conflict, so he can't represent us on this case, but he has, um, recommended someone uh, that can. And so he provided a contract to me and we can look at that next meeting to get started. Winter Steger is here tonight. Um, they're on the agenda for approval for the state plan. Other than that, um, do you guys have questions? I just tried to touch on a few things, but.
You know, we've received some exciting news this afternoon about a object that's 300 plus feet in the air. About back to our right hand side here.
Oh, the water tower. Water tower? Wait.
You're talking about me?
Wait, what are you talking about?
The, the fact that we're potentially, or not potentially, but we will be getting that, uh, taken care of and cleaned up yet this year.
The water.
Yes, I've been very persistent.
Very, I'm on all the emails.
It'll get done.
That's good news.
Yeah, getting that, finally getting that, that cleaned up. And then, uh, I know there's going to be discussion about the continued maintenance plans and et cetera, et cetera for it. But I know that's been a topic of discussion in several meetings in the past. So I wanted to make sure we got that out there that that's going to be finally taken care of. So all part of the catching up process and getting our ducks in a row.
Be good to see that.
See, I used, I used analogy right there. There you go.
Scott's financial statements. I certified the debt with the state, um, submitted that. Unclaimed property, I'm working on that recording. I don't know if you remember that was in the audit report that you were doing that. So we, Marissa and I have been working on that together. We got the new utility water rates in and, um, that's about it. Yes.
Thank you both for everything and Marissa as well for all the work you guys have done and, uh, get us back on track and everything. We greatly appreciate it. Last but certainly not least.
Uh, planning and zoning did not meet this month, uh, because we didn't really have anything that needed dealt with. Uh, there was a revised site plan for Winter Steger. Uh, but looking at it, it didn't seem to be significantly different from what we already had, except it was splitting the lot in two. But the building site still would meet all the setback requirements. They were planning to add additional screening, which is preferable to us as far as we're concerned. So we did not meet this month.
Thank you all. All right, on to number seven, the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments on anything within the consent agenda, or do we just want to go ahead and get a rapid?
I'm going to.
Second. Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fortes. Uh, on to number eight, the discussion of the pet waste receptacles versus the city parks. Jill or Katie or whoever, you guys want to give us a little bit more info on this? I know you worked at the last meeting, but.
Um, we've been working on it for a while. We're actually working on the pet receptacles with Chad. Um, when I was still on the board, um, we had brought it and we tried to pass it back then. And, and we think it's important. Just to be able to offer that to the community. You know, there's a lot of dogs in the community and, and some that maybe don't come after their dogs. So just be able to have, we're hoping that just be able to have it there that they utilize that. But, um, yeah, I think it would be a great addition to, to both parks. And I think for it.
And remind me Katie, cause I know, uh, what was the, I'm looking at the, the deal here. Was it the combo that they were looking at with the?
They wanted the full system.
With the, with the bag, with the baggy receptacle and the waste receptacle that below it for her.
And they wanted the metal ones.
Yes. And we haven't had any thing from, uh, maintenance. They're okay with taking care of it. I had that conversation with them.
Yeah, I copied them on all the correspondence. I've talked to Ron just, and this is why we're having this conversation. Cause I want to make sure reports approved that they know they're taking care of it. So yes.
Okay.
Do we have any idea on, uh, I don't recall if we discussed this at the parks meeting. I looked to you because like you said, you weren't there, but I don't recall. Did we discuss, uh, did they discuss rather where these might be placed in the parks or?
I don't think we ever really talked about the location, but, um, that's something Brian and I can look at and determine.
I'm guessing I need bolted down too. So do we have to pour a little concrete pad? I'm assuming to install that. Maybe that's something to look into.
As I look at it here, it's, uh, the state into the ground.
Yeah, T post, as long as it's set far enough into the ground, the theory.
We shouldn't need it.
Need it.
With the issues that we've been having at park, does it make sense to have any sort of conversation about waiting to install these until after we have a camera? And see all the bags disappearing and other nefarious business.
Maybe we could bring it up. If you, if you guys are not comfortable with it, we could bring it back to the parks board and just say, hey, let's wait a while and.
We're just worried about our nice things being.
Not nice?
Yeah.
That's a common theme.
No, I think that's.
I think it's a great idea. I do think it needs to happen. I also think people mess with them.
Oh, I think they'll just be that we can see who's doing it.
Um, thoughts from you, comments?
I do think that, uh, you know, waiting just a moment. They're definitely needed, but waiting just a moment so that we can get the security beefed up a little bit. You know, it may not stop them right away, but, uh, catching some in the act and. Help cut that down in the future.
Well, I do have a question about, um, so if, as far as the cameras go and things for like perisceptical to the park, um, damage to the park. If we catch somebody doing it, um, is it, I think Ron brought it up, but do we, are we going to implement fines? I mean, I feel like we should do something.
I think that's definitely a discussion worth having and it would be kind of on a case by case basis or a tier level perhaps. Um, yeah, I'm sorry.
There's laws. I mean.
I mean, it's just criminal mischief.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's a law. So yes, it is enforceable. Um, and I, I don't want to skip over the point that I would never, I, I don't want it to be overlooked that cameras at one park is not the goal, cameras of both and using the water treatment facility as a source of internet is, is not, is an option that that gentlemen and I from the company talked about as well. It just sounds like somebody cut this light up pretty bad not that long ago out on this brand new playground equipment we put on, um, as well. So I mean, I don't want to say that it happens all the time and yeah, but it does. It's just what are we going to do about it? And then the enforcement comes down to, as Brad just said, there's laws, it's criminal mischief. There's of course, there's things we can do. Kids that were caught vandalizing the ponds a couple of months ago, uh, I watched the county sheriff come right up to them, take them to their parents. They, they pulled out a fine, I know in one case as well. So yeah, it'll get taken care of. As far as putting new things in and trusting people not to ruin them, it could be six, eight months before we have cameras up depending on budgeting. I, I, as I sit here right now, I don't have it memorized what's in the park budget and what's in for cameras this year. It could be July of next year before we get them put up if we were sticking to budgets. So I don't know. I, I don't want to wait a whole year just in case somebody might or may not damage them. Um, with the promise of, well, hey, maybe we'll be cameras sooner. Kind of goes back to the wheels of government. We're slow and sometimes it's unfortunate. We want cameras faster, but you know, at the cost of what? And if the cost of what is more important, then we have to go that route. So it could be, it could be in two months, but it also could be in six or eight. So.
Yeah.
I don't want to spend the money twice either as it's.
Right. So reel it back to the pet receptacle, which is the reason we're being here, but good side conversations we have about it as well. My only comment on it, I think it's a great idea, but if the, if they're going to be placed right next to or right by the park entrances or the, the main areas where people are going to come and go, and there's already a standing trash can there. Is it redundant to have the, I'll say the full setup with the baggies and the little waste can with a regular trash can right there for it to just be bottled together? That's my thought unless somebody has a counter to that.
I believe technically it's not supposed to go with regular trash.
Okay. I did not know that.
I think there's a, I, I don't think, I think there's a way they have to dispose of it. After they take the bags out.
Fair enough. I will educate myself further on that. So I, I, I flush and I know where it goes. Well, best case scenario. So.
Let's, um, my advice would be let's spend the next, depending on bandwidth, obviously, but let's spend the next 20 some odd days looking into feasibility of cameras in the short term, get the budget looked at, get companies, get costs, get projections and everything. And then maybe they can all be done at the same time, budget willing. Or maybe we have to wait, but let's, if you've got time, let's start focus on that. I can get you the phone numbers that I've been in contact with in the past and an idea of what they're looking at.
So this will be cameras and internet installation.
Potentially. I mean, that's the only way to do the cameras. There's no other way to do it.
Okay.
Unless we get 4G cameras, which was a whole nother thing in their subscription.
Are we going to revisit this the next meeting then? Based on?
We should have way more information by then.
If I can get quotes by then, we can talk about it. Okay.
And in the meantime, just pick up your. Where it works supposed to go.
Thanks. Um, all right. If there's nothing further on number eight, let's move on to number nine. And we go with that? On to number nine, consider resolution 2024 dash six zero, a resolution providing for notice of hearing on proposed amendment to the revitalization plan for the Elkhart urban revitalization area.
So this is the same plan. This is just a resolution setting the new hearing date for September, the September meeting. Are there any questions? Since last week.
Motion to approve resolution 2024 dash sixty, resolution providing us hearing, proposed amendment to revitalization plan for Elkhart urban revitalization area set for September's meeting.
Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fortes.
So just a heads up on that, the use of the urban revitalization area is what is suggested by our bonding attorney. Um, and therefore it is the way that cities of our size and the cities of a lot of different sizes, um, are able to put TIF districts in place that allow for the city to attract businesses and things of that nature. So there are other ways, there are longer form ways of doing it, but after researching those directly to Tony's comment that you had sent in the email, um, this was the way that our bonding attorney had addressed that. So we can discuss that in September, the meeting, and we can, we can potentially have them come, but I just wanted to, I, I read that. I saw what you said. And I just, before I voted yes to move it into September and set the meeting, I, I just wanted everybody to know that that is the avenue that they have chosen for us. That we have full faith that that's the avenue that is the best to protect the city. And it is just specifically for the area that is annexed in, that was overlooked the last time these TIF districts were set up and the urban revitalization was used. So, so I.
Thank you.
But we can go into more depth at the public here.
Yep. Awesome. No problem. Awesome. Thank you all. Yes. Yes. Uh, number 10, consider resolution 2024 dash six one, a resolution to approve appointment of Garrett Fagan, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, uh, to the Elkhart Fire Department. Katie, did you have Scott's little blower?
Yeah, um, Scott sent some information for Garrett. He said Garrett is a resident of Elkhart and has many years in EMS and fire service. Um, his years of experience, experience, desire to be a part and desire to be a part of our department will allow him to assimilate quickly into our organization.
Awesome. Motion to approve resolution 2024 dash sixty one.
I give it to Schaefer. No, no biting. Please. Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fortes. On to number 11, consider resolution 2024 dash six two, a resolution to authorize the transfer of funds from Elkhart Fire restricted cash account to general fund for payment of $39,000 even to fill out fire for cylinders.
So this, the restricted cash account is the money that was donated years ago that was designated to use specifically for fire.
And this was. Yeah, I can't, I can't remember what meeting it was at, but I know we discussed it and proved all that. So.
That is. Motion to approve resolution 2024 dash sixty two.
Second. Get that one to Campbell. Is there any other discussion, questions?
No.
Okay. Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fortes. Number 12, uh, resolution, consider resolution 2024 dash six three, a resolution to approve six month extension to public works, full-time employees for unused vacation.
So their anniversary dates are in September and, um, they can carry over 40 hours, um, at their anniversary date. And then in our handbook, it says we pay out 40 without pension. So that leaves Ron left with an additional 60 hours and Rick left with an additional 88 hours. That they're requesting six months, an additional six months to use. And it is hard when it falls out and we're on the weekends to use it all the time. So I get completely where they're coming from.
So a couple of things I'll just throw in there. I can name three specific times where the combination of those two have saved numerous basements in the city from flooding. One was on a holiday, two of them have actually been on holidays. It's two of July 4th, two years ago last year. There's numerous times where they've answered the bell late in the evenings. Um, and I, and I get that. I would just throw in that a six month extension is, is generous. Um, but if they have vacation, they need to start using it. And hopefully they, they take the time off they need so they don't burn out. But I would say a six month extension is probably good. If it's not used in six months, I don't, we can't keep picking the can down the road either. So, um, encourage them to use it if they're watching at home, I can tell them too, but just encourage them to use it. Just be wise in scheduling and let us know if there's anything we need to do to backfill or to have extra people on for responsibilities while they're gone, those extra hours. I think they should get to use it.
That was my exact thought as well. I have, I have no issue giving them the extension, but I'm concerned. I don't want to abuse them and not give them the opportunity to use their vacation. And good-hearted people tend to sacrifice themselves for their job. And I don't want us to put them in that position. So I do want to make sure we've got a solid system in place so they can feel comfortable using their vacation and then they don't have to worry about this in the future. Cause that's a lot of hours. So that's just unfortunate.
So you're saying kind of like, maybe we can have a backup.
Well, just, just, I mean, we, my, my point is redundancies, right? So if they're going to use, if they only have six months to use a month's worth of vacation, right? An 80 hours care or two, two weeks worth of vacation, two and a half weeks in one case, just being wise about when it's used and making sure that when they're off, they're off. And that they're not responding to things they don't need to respond to. And hopefully one of the two would be available if needed. And just having that redundancy built in. My main point is that's, that's a whole nother conversation. The, the point is I'm fine with approving the extension. Just let's, let's use it this time. And then make sure they're.
Um, we don't, I don't, I'm not saying we don't let, but we don't, um, like they were taking offset vacations is what I'm trying to say.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Have that redundancy built in. So, but at the same time, we can't mandate whether they do or don't take vacations. It's just, we need to make sure that if they ever do line up and they're on the same time, we need to make sure we have a plan in place, whether that's Javier or somebody else on call in that situation. I know B and K has always provided backup services and, and advice on things as well, but in the rare occasion that does come up with extra hours being granted, we just need to have a quick plan in case it does. That's all I'm asking. More just like a FYI, probably we should have really good at that.
Mr. Foraker, anything from you?
I agree with everything said.
Also, when we approve this, can we make sure that we like, we need to say that no extension after the six month. Do they even use anything?
They're pretty.
Individuals. I just don't want them to, I just don't want them to be like, well, let's carry it over again and again. And again, and pretty soon it's 4,000 hours of vacation.
I would, I would take. They should be under the understanding that, you know, technically we don't have to prove tonight and then they've got two weeks to take over.
Yeah, we, we want an incentive to use the time off, not a penalty for not using it. I'm not saying penalize anyone. I'm saying incentivize it to use.
We've also had a really interesting year with weather, with the stations. And there's been a lot of big projects going on this year. So.
I think this would be perfect where the, uh, I guess that's with you with during the report section as far as having a, a pool to draw from where if let's say Ron is out for a week or he takes a week and a half at a time, you know, we need, we need to keep up on the mowing in the summertime or what have you. We've got those folks that we can, hey, we need help with mowing. Would you be available this day or this time, you know, weekend day or what have you? That's where that would definitely kick in as well.
So like nine out of 10 summers, it would normally be brown grass and. So like nine out of ten summers, it would normally be brown grass and not having to cut it twice a week, but
exactly.
You've been blessed with a lot of green this year.
Yeah, that, that go pretty much everything council, you guys have said. I, I have no issue with it. I would respectfully say it's, this would probably be like a, a one and done type of deal where we don't continue to redo and re-extend and re-extend, um, taking into consideration a lot of transition and change and, and weather events and et cetera, et cetera. But I, I have no issue personally at this time either, so.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash sixty three.
Second. Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice. Consider, excuse me, number thirteen, consider resolution twenty twenty four dash six four, a resolution to divide, to define overtime compensation in the Elkhart employee handbook.
So Deb and I were looking at this and it's our first one here. Um, the way the handbook raises it unclear as far as what overtime is because it states, um, it could be in excess of eight hours a day or in excess of forty hours a week. So we are proposing to just change it in excess of forty hours a week. That's standard. And would relieve any um unclear uh, questions because Ron has asked me already what it means, so.
I think that's an excellent, not addition, but uh, change or correction rather to clarification, be better, better word. I, I've never, I personally never worked in a job where if you work more than eight a day, you get overtime for that day. I'm not saying they don't exist, but I think they're more rare than anything. So that's my thoughts on it. Counsel, any questions, comments, discussion? Well, anyway.
Motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash sixty four. Resolution divine overtime compensation in the employee handbook.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
What you've all been waiting for.
Yeah.
Number fourteen, consider resolution twenty twenty four dash six five, a resolution to approve site plan for the Winter Steiger. Say that right? Winter Steiger?
Yeah.
At, at fourteen oh nine Northwest Laurel Street, and that's the overview over in the industrial area.
Yeah, thank you. Dean Rogier was civil advantage, uh, civil attorney for these guys. See, Dave Cowman, Matt Alba present tonight also. Three point three acre site, north is this way. So this is Laurel, south side Laurel, east side of thirty eight street. It's uh, two buildings, twenty two thousand four hundred square foot total. Winter Steiger's agricultural equipment, storage and some service. So that's what they'll be doing in these two buildings. We did add parking as, as was mentioned, and we are going to apply to survey to, to parcel all this out, um, just to split this lot for ownership. Um, a little bit different ownership here and here, but um, these are all plotted lots already, so there's no problem with that. The parking and everything meets code. It had the landscaping across here. And the, there, there's two items that we wanted to deferral. The sidewalks out here, as everybody else out here, there's no sidewalks. It's all white industrial. So we're asking sidewalks to be deferred, just like everybody else out here, they, nothing to connect to. And then the deferral of the, the, the scrabble area back here, as many other sites also, same thing here. Winter Steiger only plans to bring in maybe one or two semis a week out here. So it's very light use in this back area and it's hidden behind these buildings also. So I think that makes sense, but those are the two items I want to make sure I mention. Yep, yeah. Any questions?
Jordan had notes for us on the deferrals as well.
Yeah.
These information she sent out are getting to there.
To counsel's interest in the sidewalk waiver, what that looks like is a a document that we could put together. We've done in other communities and it basically just says at such time that uh, the city wants to have sidewalks that they would go in at the property owner's expense and then that gets recorded and goes with the property.
Did you do those for any of the properties? Cause you, you mentioned there's no sidewalks on the other one.
There's not. And so that's, that was kind of our question is there's not sidewalk, as far as I know, there's no sidewalk waivers for anything else out there. So, yep. It was just kind of something we see some cities starting to look at when it doesn't make what makes sense for sidewalks now, which it doesn't make sense to do now. Uh, some cities have been doing these sidewalk waivers, but at the same time there's not sidewalks in the entire industrial part. So whether you want to start now or not, that's kind of up the city.
Especially on the last lots to be developed. It wouldn't connect back to anything.
No. Could we just add them to maybe where Main Street will connect, where Main Street will come down through? Cause we'd probably want sidewalks on Main Street, right? Going how? I don't know.
I'm, I'm mixed on it. Um, I'm trying to pull up the email from George here and I'm struggling to find it. Um.
Main Street wouldn't come anywhere near any of those.
No, that's, well, I just remember saying that it would eventually connect to the industrial part, so.
Yeah, Main Street would be the street essentially that's just north of the grid area there. It'll be two full lots south of that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm conflicted on it. Uh, well, council, do you guys have anything before I throw my two cents out there?
My two cents is that there's nothing for them to connect to. So putting a waiver in place at the cost of the bill doesn't make a lot of sense. I don't see the need for future sidewalks. And if in twenty dish years when the city builds out there, maybe that'll change, but.
And that was, that was basically going to be my comment is if, you know, as we look to future growth and we develop that, if, if that were to become a, a walking loop for some folks in the evening, but that's also several, several years out, if, if even in the foreseeable future. So that would probably be a conversation for that time and a council and a mayor at that time and all that. So I I would like to see them. Yes. Can I live without them? Cause I can't tell you the last time I've ever walked out there. So one, one, cause I can't get there unless I walk the highway and two, it's.
Can you, so can you just verbalize V and K's recommendation at this time in regards to the waivers or do you guys have one? Should we implement waivers and ask them to have that in the future plans? Or are you suggesting that we waive that at this time and just not have it?
It's entirely up to council, whether you want to have something in place for sidewalks going in twenty years from now or whenever that might happen and have this one property you need to put it in. Now, there's a couple of other empty lots out there as well.
But that's all part of your acres. Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Um, isn't there some empty lots on the north side of Laurel?
No, it's, they, um, it's not just that one company. I would say if you do this, then everybody needs to do it. Why not? Cause you're the only one signing up there. We're gonna do it everybody else. He's designing Uber and, and.
Yeah. And so at this point, you don't, they're already established. You can't require them unless, unless you go through the process of assessing the properties to do a sidewalk as a city assessment project, but that's a whole nother thing. Um, so yeah, this is the last one out there. It may be best just to say, we're going to treat this property no different than any other ones that were out there before us and and just move on.
Yeah. If it was like Joe was saying, if it was going to connect through, then that'd be like a, hey, let's, let's have that conversation and let's talk with the other properties and let's maybe consider that. Um, but since that's not the foreseeable future case at all, I yeah, I don't see the need to.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Does he get a vote?
Whoever approves it just without the waiver of the sidewalk provision and.
The gravel lot.
Yes, it will need a waiver for that.
All right. So motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash sixty five, a resolution to approve site plan for Winter Steiger at fourteen oh nine Northwest Laurel Street. Uh, without the waiver for the sidewalk and without the granular, granular lots.
With the granular.
With the granular lot. Yes. Yes, if you got no sidewalk, yes, gravel lot.
I second that.
Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi. Thank you, gentlemen.
You guys are welcome to stay and hang out if you'd like, if you got other things to do, whatever you'd like to do. Yes, thanks, sir. All right. Onto number fifteen, consider resolution twenty twenty four. Excuse me, dash six six, a resolution to approve pay estimate number eight for main lift station improvements project. Horace.
Uh, so this is a payment amount of sixty five thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars.
Is that it?
No. Grab the wrong one.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Grab the last, last, no. That's right.
Yeah. The original joke was, is that it? Is it like sixty five thousand?
Side note, the check was not actually physically heavier last time. I just wanted everybody to know that. So.
Uh, they're ninety four percent finished. We are having a progress meeting on site on Wednesday. And we're going to go through everything to kind of wrap things up. And I would anticipate at your next council meeting, we'll have a complete project. We recommend payment uh, to on track in the amount of sixty five thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars.
Council questions, discussion? Straightforward as always. Okay, take it away.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash sixty six, a resolution to approve the pay estimate number eight for the main lift station improvement.
Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice. Number sixteen, consider resolution twenty twenty four dash six seven, a resolution to approve pay estimate number thirteen for the water treatment plant expansion project.
So we would recommend payment to WRH in the amount of six hundred and forty four thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty two cents. Uh, they made a lot of progress. We have a roof that are working on siding on the walls. They wait till Councilman Schaefer is back to do that. And they're doing a lot of work inside. We have a progress meeting tomorrow with the contractor on where they're at with that project.
Are you able to get at that time kind of an estimated completion date by chance?
Uh, they have, every month they've been updating us with that.
Yeah, we'll describe that from K D then. What is the, the latest one to sign out tomorrow? Stay tuned. Well, before that.
Uh, they're still, their goal is to be finished um, end of the year or shortly, right at the beginning of the year.
Awesome. Awesome. I know a lot of people are excited about that, myself included. So. Council questions?
No.
Take it away.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash six seven.
Second. Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell. Fordice.
Hi.
Hey.
Uh, onto number seventeen, consider resolution twenty twenty four dash six eight, a resolution to approve administration staff to attend Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference in Sioux City, Iowa, September eighteenth through twentieth.
So I provided um, the estimated cost for um, Deb, Marissa and myself to go and sort of remember. Um, this is what was done last year. Not saying we have to do that, but um Rebecca went last year and I believe the two other staff members in City Hall did, but um it's a great educational opportunity. I've actually never been to that Iowa conference myself, but um in order to network with other city officials, it's very beneficial. Uh, they have lots of different courses. You get to select what ones will attend. Um, and so I know Deb is interested in going to a tip one. Uh, I will probably go to that with you. And um, there's some good budget ones and grant writing and, or grant funding. There's lots of different ones. Um, but just wanted to put it on there for approval. Um, be transparent and hope that you guys support it.
I'm conflicted. I feel that the information is absolutely good for you guys, that you guys should get that information, but I'm conflicted in the part that, you know, I don't like to leave nobody at City Hall.
That's been a concern. Well, let me pause again. Counsel, you guys comment before I throw my two cents in.
I would say, um, yes, it is a valid concern. Um, however, I know multiple courses that are offered. It's not possible for one person to attend all of that and bring it back. And that doesn't even cover the ability to network with other similarly uh employed individuals throughout the state uh, to network with and uh be able to reach out to when it needs arise.
So is there going to be somebody on a call?
Yes.
And when everybody's gone?
Yeah, we will have phone numbers. The, we, we've discussed this and when Katie initially brought it to my attention that they were wanting to, she was wanting staff to do this. That was one of my main concerns because it's been brought up in the past. Um, we will have emergency contact phone numbers. Uh, mine will be up on, uh, Dylan City Hall. Katie, I believe yours will be up on City Hall as well. Uh, we may have either one person for council or Ron Cornwell or somebody else available. Um, I don't believe that falls on a billing date. I'd have to double check the calendar.
Not a billing date.
Uh, as far as a bill due date, rather.
Um.
If it were, if it were the case, which it is, uh, I believe we would um, extend and not, there would no be, be no late fees assessed.
We wouldn't be running penalties if we're out of the office. Like she would run it the following business day. So.
Campbell, any comments from you? Horace?
I think networking and training is fantastic. I think that it's um, with the way our city's growing, the opportunities that our city has, I think that it would be foolish not to send our three full-time staff members to something that they're going to only bring back good things uh, for our town. So that's my opinion on that.
Fordice.
I see it every single month on the agendas that are put out in the communication that's put out the, the benefits of having Marissa attend that last year. Um, I know that a lot of the preparation and a lot of the knowledge that I've gained over the last several years from neighboring cities such as Oak City and Bondurant, that is gained at a lot of those conferences. Um, the desire to further one's career through professional development is dependent on each of those people and what they want to do. So, you know, I think it's on the city to help provide for that. But at the same time, if a lot of that professional development needs to take place and we need to come up with a better plan of what is acceptable, what isn't acceptable. But for this specific instance, for Sioux City on September eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth, I have absolutely no issue with it. Uh, I don't believe that the absence of people at City Hall will cause any issues. And if it does, it's something that we'll have to learn from and move, you know, and then come up with a better plan the next time. But having the city hall closed for a few days in a small town is something that I think we'll be just fine with dealing with, with yourself, myself, whomever needs to be on. Ron and Rick, as we just mentioned, don't use their vacation time anyways. I'm sure one of them will be available.
With all due respect. Angie, Campbell and Forrest, I'll look to you guys since you were here during that time. Were there any issues with City Hall being closed last time that you can remember? Any, any legitimate concerns or citizen issues or?
No, nothing that's so overt that it jumps right back out of my brain. And I've been impressed with everything that the League of Cities has put out and I looked at the list of the different courses and I'm quite frankly, I'm jealous. Cause uh, exactly to your point, like continuing development, we can't ask you guys to do that. We don't give the opportunity to learn and network. So.
I've asked, I've asked Katie, um, coming back from these types of things to work with the, the gals and provide some type of a summary of what you guys brought back, how it's impacted and as it maybe it's a grant application that you found out about or a networking thing, you may just highlight that as you go so that we can see and future councils can see the ROI of these. Otherwise it's just speculative on whether or not, oh, this was great and this was great. It's like, but what about it? How did it drive this policy or how did it help us change this? Because if we can put a real ROI behind it, it's a lot less painless at the door shall are for three days. So I appreciate that.
Uh, my comment was um, not about you guys not going and not learning. I actually think you guys need all the information. I think it's wonderful. Um, mine just concerned about City Hall being closed. I just want to clarify that it wasn't about you guys not going.
Valid concern.
What's the, um, what's the average, uh, I'll say foot traffic per day or phone call volume per day that realistically, what can I impact? Would this be if we, if council chooses to approve it rather, uh, with not being there for three days?
What would you say? Two to three people?
It depends.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't know, somewhere between five and ten.
A day?
People coming?
People coming? I guess I.
A lot of people stop and drop off.
Yeah, utility bills or their permits or they, you know, they're wanting to keep their permits. So then, you know, she has to point this to them.
Yeah, just extra diligence on making sure people know in advance. I mean, as soon as it's approved, let's get the word out. Let's use the message board out front. Let's put it at the post office. Let's put it at the posting locations and utilize social media as much as possible. Let people know. That's all I'd ask.
And if there were any ID files here, if there are citizen needs as far as getting access to permits or what have you, that's going to be right in harvest season. But if I'm in town for that, I'd be happy to come in and when available and if they leave a voicemail for me or something like that, I can grab them and drop them off personally. I'd be willing to do that as well. So make it work. Counsel, any further questions, comments? Motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash sixty-eight, second. Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
One thing I would add, and it would apply to the, to the next as well, if council were to approve it, Katie is kind of like Fordice said, as far as a summary report. Attend as many different as you guys all can, just to kind of cover as many of the bases we can. So that'd be, that'd be my only request, so. On to number eighteen then, Consider Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash six, nine, a resolution to approve out-of-state travel authorization for Katie Wilson to attend the Twenty Twenty Four ICMA Annual Conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, September twenty-first through the twenty-fifth.
So this is right after the Iowa League conference. I did check with some surrounding cities. Chelsea and Marquita and Polk City and Bondurant, they attend both each year. So I just, I'm not familiar with this, so I wanted to make sure that was okay. But I was, I had an amazing time at the Iowa Conference and meeting a ton of people and very supportive, a great network. And a lot of people encouraged going to this conference as well. And the Iowa League provides stipends for first-time attendees. So I was able to get that for registration. It is included in my employment contract to attend, but I wanted to put it on here for transparency. Make the public aware, make the council aware. That, that's where, where, yeah, that's where I'm doing. I would still have my laptop and access to my phone and email while I was there.
That stipend covered not all of the, most of the registration fee, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Yeah, it was eight hundred and ten dollars.
Out of the, am I saying nine sixty-five?
So a recent example of the networking that she's speaking of was when we were contacting Polk County Sheriff's about additional coverage and the emails forwarded out from the different communities about what do they do? Do they have their own full-time? Are they contracting out? How much is their contract? How many hours? You guys saw the different cities that were listed on that. It's an example of the connections that are made at such conferences and how they've been vital to helping us get things right and finding the right people to help us with that. In terms of the back-to-back nature of it, that's obviously not awesome because it's back-to-back. We would just ask for an action plan of, you know, a redundancy of duty. Well, Katie's out. What if it can Dev handle? What if it can Marissa handle? And then what if it needed, would need to be triaged or wait until you get back? And then any projects that have dates that fall in that range for updates or things, just have a, have a redundancy built in so that there's, you know, Forrest knows he can contact, you know, Dev during that time or something. So that all of our professional counterparts, engineering counterparts know who to get in touch with. In terms of part of being part of the contract and growing, I mean, you know, part of what attracted Katie to this job and part of what's going to help us continue to grow as a city is fostering the growth of of our employees. It's, it's not all on us to do that. They, they do have to, as it was pointed out in an email, have to take initiative and some of it's going to have to come out of their pocket. But I see this as a reasonable expense. It's in her employment contract that she attend this. And I, I think it's something that helps attract good talent to cities that are growing and she's not necessarily traveling to Pittsburgh, in my opinion, to learn something that she can bring back and potentially use the next day, although that'd be cool. But it would be nice if it's stuff that she can bring back. The city's going to double in the next very short amount of time. And there will be schools and there will be more bond issues and there's more things that are going to keep coming up. And this is the type of an event I think that'll allow her to learn more for the future, even if maybe the, you know, as it was pointed out, even if the agenda isn't relevant to a city the size of Elkhart today. That, that's my two cents on it, so. Now, with all due respect, if you go and it's kind of a dud and you don't want to go back and it's not worth it, then reinvesting that or skipping it next year would be my best advice as opposed to just going because it's a, you know, let us know what you think of it as well. Because if there's better ways to spend that educational budget or better ways to define what you consider valuable, let us know.
I appreciate you seeking out the stipends as well.
Yeah, it helps a lot with the.
A lot, yeah.
Utilize the resources that exist.
Campbell, Edler, Schaefer, or you, Schaefer, I'm sorry, Foraker, you just, that sounded like. Yeah, you're all three of you. You guys have anything to add or comments, questions?
I have a desire to see professional growth as like beneficial for everyone here, to include citizens, all of us on council and mayor. I think that having a stagnant career with not receiving education from the outside and not being able to network. But that would be again stagnant and plateauing out in their careers kind of thing, but we are a great city, so.
We don't know what we don't know, or in this case, you don't know what you don't know. And this, I think, would be a very excellent opportunity. Like Ed said, Fordice said, if it turns out to be a dud, then we know that, hey, I'm not going to do that again next year. But I think it's worth looking into and just kind of combine everything that everybody said. As we grow, I think being more proactive with our education and promotion of job building skills, can I say that versus just being reactive and, oh, now I need to learn this because this happened. I think that'd be beneficial, so. That's, that's where I stand on it. I have no issues.
No issues.
Motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash sixty-nine.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
All right, on to number nineteen, Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty Four dash zero eight. An ordinance admitting the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa to provide recycling rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
So this is the one percent increase we discussed at last meeting to basically, basically a pass-through from the vendor, so. And it would move the residential rate, monthly rate from four dollars and fifty-four cents to four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
And if we said no, then we just wouldn't have recycling.
Correct.
Yes, no? If we said no to this, we just don't want to undo the rates, what are our options the city would have to pay for? Or we just don't have recycling or give me the?
We would recoup, yeah, we would use out on, because we would be overcharged.
So this isn't us making them pay more. This is metro waste and just passing it through for verification.
No, I think you were virtually here for that conversation.
Yeah, I was just reiterating.
Yeah, this was discussed either for the last month or the month prior.
It was last month.
And as far as the different options, we had an A, B and C as far as the pass-through rate or what have you, so.
Reiteration.
So motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash oh eight.
I second that.
So this would be the first reading of the ordinance. Then we would prove that and then we could, if we chose to, council, we could do a, a reading soon. Waive the waive the second and third reading and then final approval. We went for the open air concept tonight. It's proving to not be as.
So we need a motion to waive the second hearing, is that what you're saying?
Well, we would approve the, approve the first reading, then we do the motion, the second, two.
Which we did.
Second, yeah, but we would. This is as info for you guys for the chain of events here. If you guys are okay with that, unless you think we need to.
So we approved the first one, so motion to waive the second.
Oh, you have. All right, the train, the train killed that whole call. I wanted to make sure we could hear everything. My apologies for the pause. So you did the motion, right? Did we have a second?
Yes.
Did I miss it?
Yes, I had seconds.
Okay, so Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice.
Yeah.
Okay. So we approve first reading. Do you guys want to waive the second and thirds? Motion and a second to do so.
Motion to waive the second, third reading of ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash zero eight.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Then a motion and a second to approve the final reading.
Motion to approve the final reading of ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash zero eight.
Second.
Give that one to Schaefer, or her first. Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Houseman. All ready?
Bye, Boris, thank you.
Bye, Boris, thanks, sir. On to number twenty, Letter A, Discussion Items, Investment Options for City Funds.
So we want to start the discussion to see, see what your interest would be getting proposals from a couple other depositories to see what they can provide us. We are not getting near enough interest that we should be getting on our accounts. There's a lot of opportunity there. So we just wanted to see ones out there. And so this is why I put it on for the discussion, make sure you're on the same page. And that you're okay with going forward and looking at these other banks. Our existing bank is going to give us a proposal also, but there is one in Anthony and then to the City of Anthony, the depository they use, I reached out to them. And then there's one in Polk City also that's going to send over one. But I'm excited. We're excited to see the difference that.
Do we have, I think I saw an email or something there somewhere in the jumbled mess here. And I'm sorry, I don't have it pulled up. Do we have any idea of what potential the difference rates would be or the pros or cons? I don't have that info yet.
So our current bank, they got back to us and they said the tier that we're in would, would be about two point, I forget what the, the rate was, two point something for the amount of funds that we had, but that would be at like the highest rate. But right now we're getting point two. Point two, three is very narrow though. So we, that's why we're looking into the daily sweep. And there's a lot of other services like deposit A and the check scheme and software that these banks can offer that we think we should look at, so. But yeah, I just wanted to make sure they're all okay with looking at those proposals, taking the time to listen to them, if you do switch, if we want.
What are the negatives of listening to set of proposals? What would the drawbacks be?
Waste of time if you're not interested, I guess.
It will involve some time with the strategy.
Yeah, it will.
Getting things through, so.
And what is the willingness to do that time?
Oh, we're, we're getting all this, like, all grand in here.
Stop the check. Counsel. Go hard and get the information. Green, I'm white. On to Letter B then, there's nothing else on that. Letter B, the social media policy.
Let me know your thoughts, what you think of it. Thought it covered a lot of concerning areas that we have regarding social media platforms. I looked at Iowa Cities, I looked at Walkies, Bondurant's, and there's one for one. And a lot of them were similar with the wording, but it was a pretty I think it's pretty thorough, but I wanted to get what, get your guys' thoughts on.
I liked how it was written out. Again, I will follow up to council. You guys go first. Sorry. I, I, I get excited. I want to come.
The, the goal of the policy is to have the structure in place, what needs to be posted, how it can be replied to, what type of usage is it, what types of things are put there? There's also protections for the city, you know, what type of information can and can't be shared, things of that nature. I would call this standard policy for most cities in Iowa, if not all cities in Iowa that have had time to, to visit it in twenty twenty-four. It's something that is just, it was a project that they were willing to take on. Katie was willing to take on with some help and get put into place. It's just another good example of things that maybe have been overlooked in the past that are slowly getting cleaned up and I don't see any issues with it. I like that we have the ability to add and change as time goes on. Social media use evolves as well. You know, my, my one thing that I would take away as well from the meeting with the school board is they're, they're struggling to find ways to connect with the non-internet crowd. They were asking us for advice and we asked them for advice right back. So as we look into social media policies, social media policies are great. They're, they're great for protection, but we've got to also stay focused that there's a percentage of our citizens who don't use social media and we still need to continue to find ways and invest in opportunities to, to find good ways to inform them. So separate conversation for a different night, but just, I have no issues with this. I think it looks great. And I, yeah, I don't have any further comments.
I don't either. I think it's needed policy and I think in the past, we, they didn't do as much social media as we do now and I think it's time to put something in place.
I feel like everything that's laid out in here is pretty much what we're already doing.
Yeah.
It's just more of a, hey, we're getting something on the books quite literally. And just a safety barrier, if you will.
It also prevents the city's Facebook pages and other social media from hypothetically being held hostage from the city for a period of time and not allowing us to get them back. Without a policy, without a policy in place, things like that are really hard to enforce legally.
Now, I, on this subject, sidebar on it, I think, like, like you just said, I think we've been doing a great job as far as getting more information out there. Like these, these council meetings are, you know, I record them now, should get them out there, post them on our YouTube channel, shameless plug. I'd like to see, maybe we continue with the stories that I've seen on Facebook, maybe those also get over to YouTube as well, for those who don't have Facebook or don't have Instagram, which we have one of those now too. Almost, and I can't say everybody, but almost everybody does have access to the internet if they so choose to do. Anybody can see YouTube or what have you. So maybe getting some information out there as well. It's just kind of a paste of, copy, paste of what's already been being out there, so. But again, like, what you brought up is the, those who, who don't have social media or don't have the internet or choose not to use it, and that's fine. How do we bridge that gap? And I'm open to any question there, not for discussion right now, but open to any question there for counsel for maybe thought, consideration. How do we bridge that gap and get more information out there in a non-digital form besides just a, on the bulletin board or on the door, what have you? Mr. Hess.
Tony Hess.
Miss Tony Hess. Well done.
Would this include the city website too? Would that social media policy cover that?
Yes, it would be in online form, but there's really no like correspondence with resident. This is more directed towards moderation of comments and moderation of what's being posted. But yeah, it would apply in the same manner.
Okay, because I don't know if they shared the email that said, oh, my complaints about the city's website because we had that functionality. And I know I talked to you several times about it.
I believe we got word today that that is working now.
Yeah, it should be working.
So, but, you know, but like, you know, the city has an Instagram account. You know, I, I didn't see, I don't know if that's posted on the cities.
I think that's. Yeah, that's, that's relatively new. I don't know, I don't know if we, I honestly haven't even looked at it yet personally, but I, I don't know.
Not that I'm big on Instagram.
You're not?
The list of all those, I think so those can be put on the front page of the site. And as far as like discovering lack of functionality, you've discovered it because you were the one that tried to use it. How many else has that we're aware of, of course, so. You've discovered it because you were the one that tried to use it. Nobody else has, um, that we're aware of, of course. So.
Yes.
Um, thank you for bringing that to their attention. They got it fixed within the day that they essentially want business day at Jali this time. Well, you told us on Sunday it's working right now.
That's not the first time I've mentioned it.
Correct, but we also switched web posts like what a month and a half ago or something like that as well. And I know there was some loss coming in from GoDaddy to the private one. So.
Yeah. Nothing's part of your reflection. Yeah, I'm not sure. So, but no, um, no, it's if, if you see, if you see things as well, you know, by all means, you know, let us know. Um, it goes back to kind of what we said earlier. We don't know, we don't know. Um, so if you see something that we are obviously not aware of it or if it's not functioning properly, just, just let us know. We can address it. We can fix it. So. And bandwidth.
Okay, so, um, I'll put a resolution on the next agenda to approve this then if you're okay. Yep.
Make it publicly available.
You need it publicly available before next meeting or?
I'm asking you. I don't know how that works.
Yeah.
Uh, to number twenty one, nothing else on that. Number twenty one, so other business.
The. Twenty C quick, sorry, was, was tabled for the next meeting for discovery for more information, correct? And more fine tuning of the policy.
Yeah, who could, county sheriff, they want to sit down and talk about it. What that would all entail. And then I haven't been able to speak with Scott.
Okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't a skip over for the sake of skipping a little bit of work. It's tabled. I didn't, I didn't specify that in the original striking of it at the beginning. That's on me.
Now on to twenty one, other business. I just. With all this discussion about parks and cameras and things like that. You know, I take my kids to parks in Ankeny, take them parks here, different parks over, uh, locally here. I just don't see cameras up everywhere. I'm just, I'm just curious. I know I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but is there any other options that we could think of? I mean, I think. To me, it just seems like we shouldn't have to do something like this.
We should.
I just.
I think it comes down to what's an acceptable loss. Is a, is a fence support structure worth the cost of putting in cameras? Yes or no? I mean, there's been repeated complaints, but has the damage exceeded an amount where we're. Willing to continue to say, we've got to let people police themselves. It's kind of a similar conversation, my opinion, to who enforces what.
Yeah.
You know, we can have cops, county sheriff sit here and, um, doesn't matter where they sit or you get the point, like it, it comes back down to enforcement. And if there's been a few smaller incidences where I know there was a basketball hoop that was destroyed last year and ended up being covered under warranty, which was nice, thankfully. I think we got a little, they, they, they treated us right on that one. Um, but yeah, it really just comes down to what's the purpose of them? I mean, we at one point with the previous council, they talked about just buying forty two dollar dummy cameras off of Amazon and putting them up as a visual deterrent. Um, but then, you know, that was just, it didn't seem very smart even just to do that. So. Great question. I, I don't see them in other cities as well. I feel like it's been isolated complaints at most. I live across the street from it. I didn't see anybody jumping on that on that specific day, but. Yeah, there's kids going through the hoops and upside down. They're on the sign. They're jumping off the sign. I can vocalize in my dad voice and coach voice many, many times for them to leave. And then as soon as I leave, they come right back and do what they were doing. Um, I think it starts with educating your children first and going from there. But. Yeah, the cost of the cameras really comes down to what, what do the taxpayers want? I mean, this is, this is all of our money as a community and. When I come back with a camera quarter, you're gonna. So the whole swear words there, it's not going to be cheap to, to do what we're being asked to do by the select few who are asking us to do it. And then the question really is. Yeah, enforcement, they break the law. There's this, but again, it comes back down to enforcement and time. We only get so many hours of full county sheriff a month. We want them, you know, reviewing security tape and prosecuting somebody for breaking a thirty two dollar thing in a park. I don't know.
It, you know, it seems very, uh.
Reactionary.
I don't know, like, like prison, like, right? You can feel like costume wire around like our parks, you know, with like. Eight acts, that's kind of. I just, I don't know. I just, I've never been to another park where there's cameras up and I just, to me, it just seems like we should be placing our children. Better than just letting them run all over the park. The park there for enjoyment, the park is there for families to have fun, for fishing, for basketball, things like that. I just. I don't know if it's reaching out, making it more like publicly known that the city says like, hey, that's a nice way to like. Watch your kids, you know, and they're the ones ultimately that are out here doing these things. Um, I don't know.
You mentioned a phrase one time, enforcement.
Through education.
Versus, yes, through education. And I think that, that's not a bad idea to start there. It really just comes back to what type of education, what's the audience and then how do we get it to them so that it an ax to change? And cameras are really more of a scare tactic than anything. Yeah, it would reduce, I think, the number of incidences, but. When we start adding five numbers and commas and six numbers and commas to a solution to maybe keep one pole from being broken every once in a while. I guess that's up for us all to decide and. Talk to people who live in the neighborhoods, talk to people who live in the city, get their opinions on it because it's going to be a hefty investment if we go down there. You're right.
But I think if you talk to the kids, um. The kids think they know who does a lot of the mischievous things, like the names are out there and that's wrong. I'd said earlier at the beginning, like. I think no one takes it upon themselves to be the police because we are not the police. Like I'm, I, I don't live on that side of town. I'm not policing over there. I don't know the name of the child and I can go knock on someone's door and say, hey, my kid said that your kid does this thing. So we have, I like, we, enforcement is the answer. Who enforces? What does that look like?
I witnessed an incident. That would be a week ago where a parent took it upon themselves to use vulgarity to attempt to enforce on some other people's children. And then within six minutes, there was three county sheriffs. With lights on pulling up because there was a verbal altercation that ensued with parents and things like that. So.
Appropriate enforcement.
Yeah, so it's, it's really, you know, I think that's, every community struggles with that and that's not something that cameras would or would not fix.
No, Mr. Hess, corporal punishment is not the answer. Um, he's back. You're cheering. Um, Jill, Rob, you guys have anything you want to add? I've got some talent, so I'm going to want to, you guys first.
No, no, I was just curious about, um, are we liable or anything if someone would get seriously hurt at the park or if some kid jumped another kid and said, well. You know, it happened at your park. I mean, are we liable for anything like that?
She'd be on our coverage. That's a city park.
Our rules apply to that as well.
She'd be on our liability.
There's enough cameras came in, can be for situations like that. They're not, they're just ridiculous.
Yeah, I think this is all a very good discussion. I don't really have anything like that.
I, I mean, my, my personal opinion, I'm, I'm for it and Mr. Adams, Mr. Hess, you guys had your hands up. I'll give you guys a second, but personally I'm for it. However, then the discussion comes in as, has been raised. The cost and then the this and that, you know, it's the, it's the visual deterrent, but it does come down to Campbell, as you mentioned. Parents, man, you gotta get on kids. You know, we want your kids. There's, there's a, there's a line between kids will be kids and kids are being. Aggressive kids or, or destructive kids or what have you. Um, you know, Steph, my fiance and I, we walk our dogs around town and. You know, a couple of weeks ago, there were kids after the fire department had been called out for, uh, I believe it was a water rescue a month or so ago. Um, there were children once again down in the lagoons, down in the ponds, fishing or trying to catch minnows or whatever the case was. We respectfully asked that, hey, guys, can you come back up on the shore and off the rocks so you don't hurt? They did. They said, we're saying some things under their breath as we walked away and that's fine, but they did and I appreciate that. Our, our goal here is we're not trying to be, you know, the micromanagement by any means. We're trying to make sure that nobody gets hurt. Um, so we don't have to go through the liability process or we don't have to this or we don't have to that. Uh, we want the kids out there have fun. I won't. I love the fact that everybody's out and play in and riding bikes and this and that, but it comes down to making sure that we're doing so responsibly or responsibly and safely. And that's, that's, that's a big thing. So, uh, Mr. Ron Adams, you had your hand up first back there.
Yeah, Ron Adams here.
Thanks, sir. For those who don't know you, we are well acquainted.
One thing Mr. Campbell brought up, yes, it's apparent on it in there and you will be surprised at the, it do individuals that are doing a lot of it. The other thing you have with the camel, Mr. Campbell, there is parks around with cameras in.
Yeah.
They are just hidden to where the common eye can't see a lot of them because it is a safety issue in case someone's abducted or someone is. Hurt or whatever that way. And so you gotta look at the safety issue. Yes, Mr. Fordice, I understand this money wise in there. But what was your kid worth if he gets hurt?
Or what I'm doing. Which one?
Some kid pulls a knife on him and sticks him in the hairline over there bleeding. Is the city not willing to throw out a little cash on that? Or if someone, and this has happened here countless times. We've had vehicles setting out here in there and I have called the sheriff on them and there and lo and behold, there's a drug deal gone down because they parked the car here and they come in, saw people down. We just a year ago had two people camping out here in the park and he was on grade A number one pervert list. In there. So if you get cameras around on some of that, yes, it may not stop it. Yes, it may be cut some problem in there, but. You may stop some innocent kid from having a, a life of turmoil into there. One thing. I just heard this. A guy had security cameras put up. They stole his pickup. They got pictures of them, stole the equipment. They could not charge them because they did not have signs up. There was security cameras there, so they threw it out of court. So remember to put some signs up.
Yeah, it, so I agree with everything you said about the liability and the danger and the safety. That's why we initiated those conversations originally. My, my caution on the pricing was just. General discussion.
It's very expensive. Don't get it wrong, but you don't have to start out with a dozen cameras.
I understand that. And I, it was more just for information. It wasn't stating an opinion in any way. Um, and as far as the legal liability. Everything that we're doing moving forward, we're running past the appropriate people. So that won't be an issue. Um, because. Recording voice is a thing, recording video is a thing. There's. Parents in town who have children that need to not be on video, the right public images, part of the social media policy even. And yeah, so with you on all that, Ron. Yeah.
Mr. Tony Hess.
Tony Hess, Low Card Iowa.
Oh, she had her. I just, just for those who don't know you guys, that's, and I appreciate.
Back in the day, the city used to get requests from people who had community service time. Funds, you know, citizens to hook up. And I needed twenty hours of community service. A lot of times we just have to think of the park or walk the ditch and that. I don't know if the city still gets those types of requests from individuals, but you know, put the, uh, the yellow crossing guard. Jacket on and low be park monitors, you know, bury the times on. So it, it gets out through that. Are they monitored all the time? No. Are they monitored sometimes? Well, yeah, they are, you know, and, you know, we're going to empower this person to grab a kid by the scruff of the neck and get them off the playground. No. Well, we can empower them to say, you know, record, you know, write down what they look like, observing there, what they observe. You know, or you guys brought this idea up, uh, previous council, the who, who, it's probably because I brought it up, but you know, there's private security firms, you know. Again, you don't need to contract, contract them with for every hour of seven days a week. But you know, if this crap's happening, is there, is there a pattern when this stuff's happening? You know, full county's not gonna, um. Dedicate a police officer to sit there and watch that or should that new sheriff watch that? But you know, a security guard who typically gets time to have that for eight hours because that's an hourly place. You know, if we had, have them for certain hours and again, you know, make them randomize the hours, you know, not faculty for forty hours a week. Um, we don't need you from nine AM to three PM because both troublemakers are in school that we think are, are doing it. But we'd like you for forty hours between the hours of three and midnight. You know, five, five days, something like that. I mean, there's other creative solutions to, to look at or to augment camp. So.
All, all valid information, gentlemen, for both of you guys, you know, and, and, you know, for the, for the meantime, it's a, if you see something, we gotta say something.
If the community service people would be a free resource, something you could have made.
So like an online pool of, like a LinkedIn for community service folk or something that I don't know about because we, I don't know. I've never heard of that.
You get a lot of it and anybody get an hour or.
I just wonder if there's like Iowa workforce has the page now or something.
Usually the mayor at the time was the one who got the request and, and I don't know if there are always people who lived here. I think there were people who lived in the surrounding area, but not necessarily. Do their community service someplace where they, no one knows their name.
Want to donate your time to the community?
Yeah, Parks Board was actually just talking about that to help with like the library.
You finish your sentence.
Yeah.
No, they just, they were discussing any like high school students that were wanting to get hours in.
So, so when you were mentioning the, that and what you just said. That high school actually be, the, yes, exactly. And then I know the football team has comment hours and things like that. So maybe that's a conversation to take back to. Superintendent Klein and see what their solutions may be as far as an, an observe and report functionality for donating.
Pick up trash when they're there, whatever. So.
Until we get our dog hooper receptacles, we could get a little hoop scooper.
Just all over the park. I can tell you that because I stepped. Playing catch with some, is that a dog or a beast?
That was a dog.
Or a person, but it wasn't a goose.
I don't know.
Yikes.
Spider walks with a beast out there pretty.
They are pretty bad.
Adrian. Uh, Adrian Vasky sits in Will Card. So I didn't know dog pee, uh, poop couldn't go anywhere but the trash or had to go somewhere in the trash. Is that something you thought about with getting the receptacles? Are we gonna have to get a new trash dumpster or anything for that? Since it can't go into regular waste? That is definitely something.
Versus not supposed to. I mean, that's, it kind of, it's the same conversation. He's gonna stand there and make sure people don't put it in there, but I guess education would be good. Did you know that you're not supposed to let your dog? We could post it on our website, make it available.
Yes, the thing is if they bring it, they bring their garbage trucks in there down here and they unload them. Down there in there where they're sitting, on Delaware where, and they'll unload it and sort through it and they'll find out anything that isn't supposed to be in there. And then they garbage them and they get it off and they'll go back to where.
Yeah, so far it hasn't been an issue, but it's definitely something.
They can wait to check them up with numbers again.
Yeah, makes sense.
I just thought about that when they said it can't go in the regular waste. Have we planned for where it's going to go when?
It would have to go in the little receptacles or people.
Most people carry it.
After the fact, like.
He's saying next step.
Yes, when Ron, right, pick it up.
Yeah, Ron, it's already sorted out. I can tell you that.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Is there another service at the higher to get rid of that or?
Yeah, what's the next step?
It's probably never.
Fire plan. Before we go down that road. Any other questions, comments, or anything on the, kind of summarize this? I think this was phenomenal discussion all around. I agree with that. The parents need a parent and, and until we can come up with a longer term, more permanent solution, just. If you guys see anything, let us know or report it to county sheriff or what is most appropriate at the time. And that way we can start to notate and document these things so we can come up with more accurate, finer tech and what would be more feasible for the city. So. That's all I've got. Um, to number twenty one, I will adjourn. We don't need a call for this.
Wait, I'm second.
Motion to.
Motion.
Second.
Everybody said.